All types of people, religious, ethnic, you name it. And so I strongly urge you to pass that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any other public comment? Other public comments, final call. All right, public comments are closed. Communications, we have the 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Action Plan. Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This communication is to just let everybody know we're starting our public comment phase of our consolidated plan. Consolidated plan, just a quick blurb, it's $2.8 million in HUD funding that we get through the federal government. The vast majority of that is our Community Development Block Grant. Those funds get allocated out by formula, which is the same formula how we get our money, to each of our local units of government in Genesee County. Those local units of government choose those projects at local level. We bring them all up to the county level, and then we go out and do our public comment on those projects. So if you look in here, there will be a listing of different projects within your districts. And I know I sent out lists of projects already, just kind of giving you an idea of some of the projects coming up. The other thing to keep in mind, you may see projects that you think, I don't see all my communities on here. That's because we have a three-year call for projects. So we take all the money, we divide it up by formula for each of those communities, and then we structure it so that each community, the communities would rather have a larger amount of money every three years than a small amount, a smaller amount of money every year. So if you don't see a community or project on here, there's probably a project for next year or the next year that's in your community.
Okay. Do we have questions from Mr. Bradshaw? Yes, Commissioner Wayheal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Director Bradshaw, this is, these are CDBG, CDBG dollars that are already allocated to us that we already have.
No. So these are CDBD, see?
I did, I did it to you.
Community Development Block Grant dollars that we, our program year does not start until May 1st. So we, once we go through this process, we still have to wait for final allocations. We have draft allocations from our federal government. They'll give us our final allocation numbers. Once we get our final allocations, we'll make any last-minute changes. Once we find what those numbers are, the final numbers, we bring it back to this body, and then we have a final approval from this board. But this allows us to get our public comment going so that we can kind of speed that process up.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Derek. We were in, some of us were in Washington over the weekend, obviously talking about budget stuff and finances and dollars that are coming from the federal government and various sources to the county. And in one or more meetings, it was mentioned that Community Development Block Grant money could be very much in jeopardy. And if you could be sort of candid with us as to what you're hearing either from Washington or from your colleagues in this field, I'd be grateful.
So we have not, so the message that we've seen, or we've heard from our federal partners are, is continue on the course you're going. There's been no determinations, right? We've also heard various numbers of, and the challenge with any of these numbers are, there's, it's hard to hear what the substance is. So I've heard, you know, dramatic wholesale cuts across the board, like large-scale. I've also heard smaller percentages. And that's the challenge without actually knowing what those numbers are. We haven't seen anything that there's a name or something attached to it. So it's really hard to comment like what those sizes are. But we have heard that this, like actually every federal government program, is facing scrutiny, and they are talking about potentially making changes.
Yeah, I think that, that sums it up very accurately, I think. And just my last comment would be, I see a number of projects in here that would fall into my district, number eight. And I know the organizations, and I know some of these projects quite well already. So pleased to see that. And I'll just say that I hope, you know, we met with our new Congresswoman, Kristin McDonald Rivet, and with Senator Peters' staff just yesterday, seems like 10 days ago, but it was yesterday, and very supportive of the county and what we're doing for people and these funds. So I am, I'm hopeful that we can maintain them. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes, thank you. So I'm looking through the various projects, and I just want to make sure, I know that the City of Flint receives CDBG dollars, familiar with the process. But these are county funds that are being allocated to the county, 1.8 million. And I'm looking through the various projects, and I do not see anything allocated for the City of Flint, which is the majority of my district. And so my question is, did you all receive any applications from anyone aligned with any projects or purposes inside the City of Flint?
So the City of Flint has a separate entitlement community, so they get their own direct allocation. And so the funding that we receive for our community development can only be spent outside of the City of Flint, and then their allocation for their projects are within the City of Flint.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
For the explanation, thank you.
Other questions from commissioners?
I will add that when we were in Washington DC over the weekend, one of the things that we, we were provided were these federal policy priorities from NACO, the National Association of Counties. And one of the policies that they are advocating for is to retain a lot of those HUD funds. And so that's a positive point, that we do have advocacy going on from NACO and our friends and at the executive level of NACO are going to be really advocating for maintaining those funds or increasing those funds for, as far as CDBG goes, home funds and all of those categories. So we'll just keep our fingers crossed.
Madam Chair, can I add just one quick thing?
Yes.
I think to put a pin on that, it's bipartisan support from the National Association of Counties. I would, I don't know this for sure, but I imagine that most, a disproportionate number of people at the conference were Republican elected officials, county commissioners and others. But it was a very collaborative conference, and, you know, people are concerned about their home communities and individuals who are receiving a lot of these programs and services who are quite vulnerable, whether you are a Republican representing those people or a Democrat.
That's correct. Commissioner Kuzinow, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to do an add-on boy, you know, I've been dealing with this a number of years and sitting on the Planning Commission. And Derek and his staff are so dedicated to this program that many of the smaller communities that receive these funds say a little unclear on how they need to go about the process. And they will actually do everything, other than sign the paper for them. So they walk it through, they, you know, tell them they're there all the time. And so I just wanted to do a well-deserved add-on boy for Derek and his staff and how they, they handle those funds. Thank you.
Ditto. Thank you, Commissioner Kuzinow. Was there another question over here? Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question for clarification. So I appreciate your explanation about the CDBG funds, totally understood. What about under like the Home Investment Partnership Program, the home funds? I do see, or actually the Emergency Solution Funds, I do see allocations for organizations within the City of Flint. Is that different? I'm assuming that's different criteria.
Yep, absolutely. So for CDBG funds, City of Flint, separate. Home funds, same thing. Our home funds have to be spent outside the City of Flint. For the Emergency Services Grant, that one is different, right? The big, the big reason is the majority of agencies that serve vulnerable populations are located in the City of Flint, and they have countywide population. So yes, absolutely, you are correct.
Thank you. Awesome job.
Okay, other questions or, okay, I think we're, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. All right, do we have any old business? No, okay, new business, Resolution 2025-1203, Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and ERG Environmental Services to Provide for Genesee County's Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program. The cost for this agreement will be paid from account 872006. It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Wayheal.
I read this earlier. Is this the extension of, of our work with these folks by one year? Derek? Okay. How long have we worked with this organization? Through you, Madam Chair, to Derek.
So I would say more than five years. We've had different organizations who we work with. Some contractors have struggled a bit, right, to be able to, be able to deliver. We actually put this out for bid last year for a multi-year contract. We had four or five bidders, and they actually were the lowest bid that we received from all of those bidders.
Is, is the dollar amount, it was like $160 a car, I think, is that the same as it was the first year?
Yeah, so the schedule, that's an excellent question. So the schedule that they propose is, that was in the RFP for the multi-year, was a 5% increase every year. So every year has a 5% increase of that term of the contract. Our goal is to get out of the business of hiring this contractor, so we can really provide beefed-up services, more services, more availability to residents. But until we can get that Recycling Education Center built, we still want to be able to provide some services. Mock Community College has been an excellent partner. We've had, they have a great location. We've done this for a few years now, and it's worked extremely well.
Yeah, I know it's a great service and very popular, so thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. We've had question, any more question and discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Other business, any other business?
Yep. Madam Chair, you do, we do have an add-on request. It's a letter of support for Priory Waste Proposed Materials Recovery Facility and Processing and Transfer Facility. Derek is here and can speak to it, but basically this is on property, I believe up on Dort and Pearson, which has historically been a transfer station up there. But Derek, you can speak to why the request for a letter of support.
Thank you. So this existing is existing in our plan, this chunk of property. They're looking to propose a new, it's about a $40 million project. And what they want to do in order to build the project they want, they're taking some property beside it. So because there's some property beside what's existing in our plan, they need a letter of support from us to the state. The way it works is the city actually has to give a letter of support first. Once the city gets a letter of support, then us, us, Genesee County Board of Commissioners, since we're the solid waste agency for Genesee County, has to give a letter of support. And then it goes on to the state, and then they have to go through all the permitting stuff after that.
Questions for Derek? Mr. Lloyd?
I was just gonna move it.
Okay. It's been moved. Is it, is there a second?
Support.
Moved and seconded. Just a question, is there a deadline for the support letter?
So there is not a deadline.
Okay.
But they cannot, they've been at this a few months.
Okay.
And so for them, I think there was a press conference that they really want to get ground broken.
Okay.
And our letter of support is what starts the state process. They can't start their process unless we give our letter, so. So it's, it's advantageous to be timely.
Okay. Yes, question from Commissioner Fluelle.
Yes, Madam Chair. Through you to Derek, is there a reason that we're just getting this tonight that wasn't added to the agenda like normally would be?
Yep. We just got it Thursday or Friday emailed to us, somewhere in that range, maybe Friday. Don't quote me on specifics, but we literally just got it. And so when I got it, I turned and sent it up to Josh to say, you know, what do we want to do with this?
Yeah, I know you guys are in DC, but if, it just seems like if they, if they were that pressed and they had to have it after the city approved it, they would have got it to us in time to get on the agenda.
Other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right.
I just wanted to say that, you know, given the fact that we just got back from Washington DC, many of us got home late last night, almost at midnight. But we had a really productive meeting, as Commissioner Wayheal mentioned earlier, with Congress, Congresswoman Rivet, and we also met with the staff of Senator Peters. And a couple of the things that we advocated for had to do with economic development in our region, in our county. We also talked about broadband and encouraged them to really fight for continuing the broadband funding that is available and making them realize that we have already put forth a lot of effort. And we voted on setting aside some money to fulfill the BEAT funding project. And we also advocated for roads and bridges with our legislators. So just wanted to put that out there so everyone is aware of the advocacy that was conducted by several members of the board when we were in Washington DC. All right, I think that's it. This meeting is adjourned at 5:48.
I guess I'm gonna have to attach it to me. I lost a pair on the way home, too, by the way.
Got those extras, isn't it?
I know. Turn this off. Are we ready?
We're ready.
I call to order the Finance Committee at, I can't even read the clock.
5:49.
5:49. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuzinow.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Here.
Commissioner Wayheal.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
First of all, we have approval of the minutes from February 19th, 2025, Resolution 25-1263.
Move it.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the committee. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to address the committee, please step up to the podium. Is there anybody else, or is there anybody that wants to address the committee third time? Anybody wish to address? Thank you. We don't have any communications, zero old business. New business, Resolution 25-1159, Approval of a Purchase Order to Dell Incorporated for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $111,422.50 to provide for the purchase, to purchase computing equipment. The cost of this agreement will be paid from account as follows.
Move it.
Support.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do.
Mr. Del Rico.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to understand the purpose of the bulk purpose, purchases. Is it, we're going through replacing aging computers? Are we just having them, you know, on hand in case there are some issues? I just want to understand the need for purchase.
They are geared, allowed to, to replace older computers. We have a life cycle system, first in, first out. So the oldest computers we have are going to get pulled out and replaced with these computers. And we do that cycle every five years.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question. Thank you for the clarification.
Does anybody else have any questions for the IT Director? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
My apologies, I know you're taking us to the vault. What, what happens with the old computers?
We have a service that will take them, so they're discarded. They're wiped, sometimes they're drilled, the hard drives, and they're discarded.
Thank you. Apologies.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike. Resolution 25-1207, Forwarding to Receive and File a Copy of the Paid County Bills for the Weeks Ending to 9/25 to 16/25 in the total amount of $22,118,308.87.
Move it.
Support it. Is there any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, who moved it?
I think Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Getzinger.
I'm sorry. And I supported it. Is there any comments or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 25-1215, Approval of Proposed Amendment to the 2425 Appropriations Resolution for Various Line Items as Described in the Attached Budget Adjustment Request. I move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I don't think we have any other business, and I am happy to adjourn this at 5:53. Thank you.
Can we have the roll?
Commissioner Wayheal.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Fluelle.
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We have the approval of the minutes. It's Resolution 2025-1272, February 19th, 2025.
I move it.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have any comment to, from the public this evening? Any comment from the public? Last call. Comment from the public. Public comment is closed. It appears we have no communications, no old business. Under new business, we have Resolution 2025-1160, Approval of an MOU between Genesee County and the University of Michigan Flint for Genesee County Employee Tuition Discount.
Move it.
It's been moved. There's support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment that University of Michigan Flint has been a really stellar partner with us over the past couple of years. And this tuition discount program is something we've been working on for the last few months. And the MOU itself is an extension of the broader contract or MOU that we have established with U of M Flint for, I think it was back in November of 2023. And so especially for the new commissioners, just wanted to bring you up to speed on, you know, the, the value of the partnership that we have with the University of Michigan Flint. And this is just one more aspect that will benefit employees here at the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Do we have other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2025-1223, Approval of a Request from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission to Declare March 2025 as Women's History Month in Genesee County.
I move it.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? I think if I might, as I did with the Black History Month Resolution, I'll read this. This one was not authored by me this time. This was authored by members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. It says, "To the Honorable Chairperson and Members of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, Genesee County, Michigan, ladies and gentlemen. Whereas Congress overwhelmingly passed a resolution in 1987 declaring March to be Women's History Month, which proclaimed that American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historical contributions to the growth and strength of the nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, that American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of our nation's life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working in and outside of the home. American women have played a unique role throughout our history by providing the majority of the nation's volunteer labor force, and have been particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in this country. And that American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only to secure their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements to create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas women in Genesee County have similarly been integral to every facet of community life, from the Women's Auxiliary and the Women's Emergency Brigade's role in supporting the establishment of the United Auto Workers during the sit-down strike, to the role of Olive Beasley in organizing the 10-day sleep-in on the grounds of Flint City Hall in support of fair housing, to holding positions of leadership in local educational, healthcare, industrial, civic, and financial institutions. And whereas to date, a total of 23 women have served on the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, starting with Charlotte Williams in 1965, who also served as President of the National Association of Counties, and including two women who served as Chair of the Board of the County Commissioners, Deborah Cherry and Ellen Ellenberg. And whereas two notable women are honored on the grounds of the Genesee County Courthouse, including Sarah Emma Edmonds, who was born in Canada and moved to Genesee County where she joined the Union Army in 1861, disguising her gender as she fought valiantly with Company F, 2nd Michigan Infantry, at the Battle of Bull Run, and with the Army of the Potomac at the Battle of Fredericksburg. And whereas, Genesee County has also memorialized the contributions of Eva R. Bells, a Flint resident who in 1888 attempted to vote in a school board election, but was turned away from the polls on the basis of being a woman, and who successfully sued in Genesee County Circuit Court and prevailed at the Michigan Supreme Court to secure women's right to vote in local school elections. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Genesee County Board of County Commissioners and the Genesee County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission hereby recognize the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month in Genesee County, and encourage the celebration of Women's History Month, participation in community events, sharing stories, and learning about the struggles women have faced and the contributions they have made to our country and nation." Do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2025-1251, Approval of an Agreement between Genesee County and New Paz Incorporated in the amount of $250,000 to provide medicated assisted treatment, MAT, Medicated Opioid Use Disorder, MOUD, inside the Genesee County Jail. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
I move it.
It's moved, is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. It appears we have no other business. We are adjourned at 6:00 PM on the dot.
Keep on a call to Human Services Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Here.
Commissioner Kuzinow. Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
It's time to chair anything, a motion to approve the minutes.
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Are any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Moving on to communications, no communications, no old business, new business. Resolution twenty-two-five one-two-one-one, approval to accept the Glow and Grow Grant Award in the amount of twenty-five-thousand dollars from Region Six Perinatal Quality Collaborative to enhance birth outcomes, reduce health disparities, and address underlying causes of inequities within our community. No additional county appropriation is required. What is your pleasure?
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. There's no other business before us. This committee is adjourned.
You might have the record, Charles.
Call the Public Works Committee order at six-oh-three. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fluehling.
Present.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
You, looking for approval of the minutes?
So move.
Support.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Do we have any public comment to the committee? Any public comment? Then public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Any communications? None? No old business? New business, resolution twenty-two-five eleven-eight-six, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Doall Cleaning Incorporated in the amount not to exceed one-million-five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-six-and-thirty-four cents to provide janitorial cleaning services at various county-owned buildings. The cost of this three-year agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion?
I have.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I'll defer to my colleagues. I'll defer.
Simple question. It's a three-year agreement. Is this total amount divided by three times? Or is this per year?
I believe this is per year, but our folks from facilities are coming up. Just as they come up, I know that Commissioner Winfrey asked us to split these buildings up to give opportunity to others, and if you look in your backup material, we did ask from each company that bid individual pricing per building, and the best cost for the county was to move forward in this direction. But Mike Noonan, our deputy director, is here.
Yeah, there's the three-year cost of this contract.
That's the total cost.
Total cost, yeah.
Thank you.
Total three.
Okay.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of questions relative to, not as much the current, the vendor that's being proposed, but the vendor who, our current vendor, who is not slated to continue on with us. I'll start with the end by suggesting that my concern is for the employees that work for that vendor now. As we interact and move about this building, particularly in our office, when I'm in the office late, there are employees that are working for this janitorial service that, you know, young people, older folks seem to be pretty happy about their job, and so, you know, my concern is what happens to those employees as we transition from the current vendor to the next vendor? You know, I'm curious, will the new vendor be bringing those employees on? Are the current janitors, if you will, are they out of a job? What does that look like? Obviously, there are a number of companies that do janitorial cleaning, and of course, we want to have the best company, and I understand all of that, want to have the best bank for the residents' bucks, but there are also, there's also personnel that we see in this building all of the time that I see working hard that are tied to this change. So can you just, somebody speak to, what's going to happen to those employees?
Yeah, so typically, when you have a contractor come in and take over, they don't have a bunch of people just sitting waiting to come in and do work. So they're gonna go through, do an interview process with the people that are here. They're already vetted, had the background checks, and have the experience in the building. So that'll put them way above someone that doesn't have any experience in the building. So typically, what I've seen over the years is they typically hire who's already here.
Yeah. I appreciate that, but I don't see that, thank you for coming up to ask questions, but I don't see an agreement of them doing that, or a commitment of them doing that in the actual contract that I'll end up ultimately signing.
So in my years of experience, I've never seen it literally written out that way.
Yes.
But I've, kind of, that's just how the industry standard is done. They just kind of do it that way.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, but, you know, industry standard is not commitment.
Correct.
Especially in the situation, as I mentioned, where folks are going to be, you know, losing their job without some hard commitment, and so.
They definitely want to come in here and make the best impression right away, so they're gonna use the best talent they have, and the best talent they have are probably people that are already working here. So they're, I'm pretty sure that they're probably gonna take everybody that's already working. I can't speak for that a hundred percent, because that's their company.
Sure. So no, I appreciate that. So I guess this is more, I'll go to Mr. Freeman, and I guess to both of you. You know, if that's something that we decide as a commission that we'd like to see them do, maybe I guess the question I would ask is, were there any concerns with the current vendor that we have, the employees that they have in the building? Maybe I should ask that question.
Yeah, I don't want to air dirty laundry or anything, but there were concerns with performance with our current vendor. I would also say that we did not bid it out in a fashion that says you have to take the current employees with you. I don't think we've ever bid any, and maybe Derek can speak to that. So I would have concerns in changing the requirements of the contract that weren't included in the bid process. That may be a legal question, too, but.
Good evening to the Chair, to Commissioner Lloyd. Again, for those who don't know me, I am Derek Jones, the Purchasing Administrator. No, there was no verbiage in the RFP as it relates to the rehire. It is, you know, my suggestion in terms of minimizing our liability to, you know, we can recommend that they can look at various employees that are currently working with the current vendor, and let them go through their vetting process as it relates to hiring. And they can open that up to all of the employees that are working with our current incumbent vendor as well. But I think it would be in our best interest is to let them do the vetting process, and we can recommend that, you know, we have these employees with the current incumbent vendor, who can apply as well.
You know, I understand, you know, having to, you know, you know, make adjustments and select different vendors. I'm very well versed in the process, and I appreciate what is communicated. You know, in this culture and climate, it's hard, first of all, to find good workers, but then sometimes it's hard for individuals to find work, and these employees have been working, although not Genesee County employees, they've been working in our building. You know, I hadn't been aware of a concern. It doesn't mean that a concern didn't exist, right? But I think that, you know, I think that we have to take that into account when we have individuals by virtue, by our action, who are going to lose their jobs. There may be an industry standard, but there's no commitment for them to hire those individuals, and there's nothing for, you know, us to communicate, or no reason for them to believe that they're going to maintain their jobs. I know, you know, there's at least one of them who just had a child, and by virtue of his action, she's probably going to be looking for work if they're not hiring her, right? And so, so that's just, that's just a concern for me. The other thing I'll mention as I conclude my comments is that although it's been, we've already gone through the RFP process, you know, if this board were to decide, hey, we'd like to have more conversation about that and see, you know, what can be done for these employees, we could send this back out. And I believe that there's time. We've been working on an extension with the current vendor. Our next resolution is a resolution to pay them for the additional time that they stayed on. I believe that their current contract allows for month-to-month, a month-to-month extension, so that maybe there can be some additional discussion about this. So I won't go on and on. I've raised a concern that I have about those employees who have been working in this building, and, you know, I'm gonna make a motion, whether, you know, receive support or not, but I'm gonna at least make it, to make a motion to postpone this, so that additional conversation can be had, so that we understand exactly what's gonna happen with those employees. Are they gonna be offered an opportunity? Is there a commitment to take them through an interview process? Is the vendor committing to give those individuals, if they meet the qualifications, first preference in terms of hiring? I'd like to understand that before I vote on something that, absent a commitment, is going to put those individuals out of work.
I'll support it.
You gotta be on the committee.
So it's been a sub, it's a sub, oh, sorry.
Support.
Substitute motion to postpone this.
Yes.
Made by Commissioner Lloyd, supported by Commissioner Avery. Discussion? No one? I'll take a minute. So, Mike, help me understand. The current janitorial staff is employees of the, is it Sayaro?
Sayaro, yep.
Sayaro, right. Do we know, were they hired specifically for this project, once they received this contract?
Yes, yep.
They were?
Yep.
So we really have no way to assure that they're gonna maintain employment?
And they've gone through all of our background checks through the Sheriff's Department and everything as well.
So we don't know that Sayaro's gonna keep them employed once they lose this contract?
Correct. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what Sayaro has in the works, if they've bid other jobs in the area, or, I don't know that.
Okay. And it's, would it be a simple conversation with Doall?
Well.
To see if they're open to?
Well, in our conversation when we interviewed them, that they were going to interview the staff that they currently have on site.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you, thank you again. I just want to be clear in terms of my position. I know that there have been a number of county employees that have participated in the vendor selection process, employees from the corps, the health department alone with the facility staff. I'm not opposed to switching companies. I would like to be able to support this resolution. I respect the work that they've done, but I just want to be clear that, just want to do some due diligence as it relates to those impacted employees. Thank you.
What, yeah, that's my question. What is your target date to bring it back?
I'd postpone it to the next committee. That gives us, you know, maybe sometime this week or next week, we could, I think we should have some conversation. I'd like to talk to you, Mr. Chair, Josh as well, and the department, and just kind of identify what are our specific ask as it relates to those employees, so that when you all, when the department goes back to have a discussion with that vendor, we can be very, very specific about, you know, what we like to see.
We have a motion to support to postpone it till March nineteenth, Public Works Committee meeting. Any other discussion? Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there an expiration date of the current contract?
No, currently, we're going month-to-month with them, because the contract had already expired. We've already exceeded that.
Okay, so we would be renewing the current contract for the month of April?
Yeah. I think April seventh was our target date if this got approved to the committee in the process.
Okay. And I'm wondering, just for my clarity, what does the due diligence look like between now and the next committee meeting? What kinds of questions are we going to be asking of Doall?
Yeah, you know, as previously mentioned, I think the due diligence looks like us having an internal question, conversation about the specific questions. I mean, this is, you know, you know, is there gonna be some type of preference? Are they gonna consider those employees? Yes or no? If the answer's yes, then the next question is, you know, what are those qualifications? You know, I'd like to understand, do they have some other qualifications that they may not have? I mean, different companies have different qualifications.
Correct.
The other question is about if these employees meet whatever their qualifications are, and clearly, they have the experience since they've been, as they've been here, will they be given preferential hiring? You know, once they, this contract is approved. I think all of those are fair questions for a vendor that we're gonna be hiring, if that answers your question. And then the department can go back and have that conversation. Hopefully, it's something that they won't have an issue doing, if the industry standard is that they look at hiring those individuals anyway. I just don't trust industry standard, because standard isn't a guarantee, and it's not captured in the agreement. I like to be able to sleep tonight, as I conclude, knowing that those employees, those who meet the qualifications and do a good job, that I like to be able to sleep well, knowing I didn't vote on something that's gonna put them out in the street without a job, if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm changing the topic, but I'd like to ask Derek, if he would, a few questions. So Derek, were there any women-owned or minority-owned vendors that received the RFP?
Yes.
Okay, there was one particular company, I guess he, they had wanted to bid, but they have no recollection of ever receiving, receiving the RFP, and that was A&amp;J Janitorial.
Okay, so what the county does is, in terms of disseminating the actual bids and proposals, is that we do run an ad in the Flint Journal. We also post the information on the county's website, and we have this service, which is called Bidnet, which is an actual tool that a lot of procurement offices use in terms of vendors registering, and then based on the classification in which they would like to receive bids and proposals, they receive an e-note from this particular agency stating that these opportunities are available. So we did do that as well.
I know a few years ago, when I asked for a vendor list, broken down by, you know, ethnicity or gender, we didn't have such a thing. Do we have that now?
So what we are doing is that we're coding a vendor that has either what we call the weebie-meebies status, and they are coded in the actual system. What happens, though, is that once we put the information in, it doesn't go back, because we do have some vendors like TGIF, AJC, SHI, that are women and minority business owners, but when you put the information in, it doesn't go back, it just moves forward.
The other question, have you exhausted all of the janitorial services you will be utilizing in the new location?
Okay, when you say exhausted.
I mean, have you met your quota, or the number of vendors that you'll be using?
So this particular resolution does include the new site as well?
It does include the new site.
Mm-hmm.
Totally, all floors.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Is this vendor, I'm looking at her, is, are they based in Genesee County?
Yes, out of Grand Lake. They have an office.
Out of Grand Lake? All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? So I have a question perhaps for the corporate counsel. Now, forgive me if it's the ignorance of my newness, short time on the board, but is it legal to break down vendors by race and gender? Break it out that way and make a, I'm not suggesting that the selection will be made based on that, but is that even legal to do that?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. I don't think there's any bar for vendors to say, we are a minority vendor, we are women-owned, and there's nothing that would bar that information being out there. We invite everyone to bid, and then, as Derek will tell you, there's a specific selection process.
And I would assume you selected this based on bid price and services provided? The reason I ask it, based on Charles' question of breaking down a vendor list by race and gender. I, and I don't know what the indication, you know, what, what that would lead to, I just, um...
I think you're just talking about data, you know.
Right. And I'm not indicating that we're making a selection based off that list, but...
I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit us from having...
Just to clarify, my, my question was directed at inclusion, basically.
Okay.
And opportunity.
Okay. But as a metric to select a vendor, that's, I'm asking, I, I don't know.
I mean, to, to get the opportunity to bid.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same? Motion carries. Resolution 2025 1224, approval of a purchase order for Sayo Services for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount of $153,166.36 to provide for the payment of janitorial services for the end of the contract. The cost of this purchase order will be paid for by the council listed.
Move it.
Support it.
Move back to Commissioner Lloyd, supported by, uh, Commissioner Avery.
I have, I have a question, kind of a, a bleed in question, but a follow-up question to Derek. Um, so this is the resolution for the current janitorial contractor that we have to close out this month. My question is, because we just postponed the previous item to the last committee of this month, um, that's on the 26th?
19th.
The 19th?
Yes.
So our, our commission meeting is on the 26th. So it's possible that we could have the new contract passed on the 26th, signed, uh, thereafter, but prior to the end of the month. How much lead time does this vendor need to, to, um, to get started?
Um, did they say four weeks, Mike?
He said four weeks.
Okay, so then they would go into April, so we would have, need to give them notification that, when do you have to get them notification that you're going into the next 30 day or the next month?
Uh, so it's generally a good practice to give them a notification of termination like 30 days prior to. Since we're running the, I think you said, monthly extensions?
Yeah.
Um, depending on when this is approved, we will have to, you know, do it accordingly, uh, as relates to the termination notice. Again, we try to do it 30 days as stated in our general boilerplate contracts. Um, but then we may have to come back, uh, with an additional extension for them to do the work while we go through the transition.
That's where I was going too. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gessner?
Uh, so does the old company know they're being terminated or no? You're just out of monthly?
We've talked to them, um, and let them know that.
Did they, did they bid, uh, to stay out?
Do we need to amend this to include April now?
No, I would just pass it the way it is and then we can do a true up resolution afterwards. But this, this gets them through, this will get us paid through, um...
March.
Yeah. Yep. January, February, March.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That ends new business.
Mr. Chairman, there is a resolution number here, but this is a discussion item for the road commission?
It is, uh, Resolution 2025 1275, Genesee County Road Commission Discussion. Commissioner Winfrey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had asked, uh, to have this discussion, uh, because of the litany of complaints, uh, were both verbally and, um, written complaints that we're receiving, uh, from various, uh, employees of the road commission around personnel practices, uh, employed, uh, by the road commission. And I want to throw it out to the rest of the commission to sort of determine how do we, how should we proceed from here? You know, to sort of, um, come to some resolution on, on those complaints. Uh, my suggestion, uh, since I have the mic, is that we hire an outside independent impartial objective investigator, uh, to investigate the personnel practices of the road commission. And to, uh, to bring the, um, report back to us, uh, so that we could proceed from there as to how, what we should be doing as a board of commissioners.
Is that a motion?
What's that?
Was that a motion or just a suggestion?
I can't make a motion, I'm allowed on the committee.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, this isn't an action item, uh, discussion.
Well, uh, can I discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I would agree with that suggestion. Um, this has, seems to be an ongoing issue that we continuously revisit. I remember Commissioner Lloyd, um, and maybe there was another commissioner that did an investigation, uh, previously, um, us, along a similar issue regarding, um, you know, HR issues. And so, um, it seems that we need some sort of professional structured, um, external consultant to really do a deeper dive and try to figure out what the, what the root causes of the problem are. And maybe we can try to, um, as a board, we can discuss how we move forward with addressing those problems.
Dr. Avery?
And I like to, that's fine, I, I get it all the time, man. So yeah, I, I'm in agreeance, I think there, at this point, you know, it's getting to the point where, um, there's a trend that continues and there has to be some structure and stability. And I, I feel that we need to look at an external, uh, way of being able, and finding out answers about how we can go forward with keeping this structured within, uh, our parameters. So, uh, I'm in agreement as well.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't sit on this committee, so I don't have a vote. Uh, however, uh, this, I can speak as a senior person, uh, for the county. This has been an ongoing issue for, forever. And, uh, I don't know what the answer is, but I think at this point in time, I think we owe it, uh, to the road commissioner, uh, employees and maybe to ourselves that we hire a professional, uh, I don't know what the proper word is, but investigator or consultant or somebody to, you know, look at the issue and report back to us anything that, uh, they recommend. So, you know, if this gets through committee at the full board, I would vote yes. Uh, but, uh, this is just my feelings.
Mr. Lloyd?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, um, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Um, previously, as, uh, Doctor, Commissioner Dr. Brown mentioned, um, we did a, an inquiry, um, which, uh, did not rise to the level of a full-blown investigation, uh, to determine, really, um, that only included us talking to the members of the board and the managing director at the time. We did not have any discussions and, uh, with any employees outside of the managing director of the road commission, just to kind of get a feel of what was happening, uh, at the time. And, uh, at that time, uh, what we found was that the board was split on rather not there were issues or there were not issues. And certainly, um, Commissioner Shoemaker and I spent the majority of the time doing those inquiry discussions. And when we spoke to the, um, managing director at the time, um, he, um, how do I want to say this? He, it was, it was clear that on one hand, he didn't believe things were happening, but on the other hand, based on his responses, he alluded that there were, uh, some issues, uh, to another degree. And, uh, certainly, um, this issue has come to us, uh, a number, uh, of times. And, um, obviously, you know, there have been different perspectives and then you add in appointments and you add in, you know, advocates from, um, different parts of our districts. Um, the discussion has always had a tone of, of politics. And I think, I agree with all of my colleagues that we really need to have a non-bias, uh, non-political, um, investigation done that does not take into account relationships and preferences and such, because these are my concerns. One of my concerns is that, even as chairperson, is that, um, that we respond appropriately as a board to any complaints that we receive from any employees, uh, no matter where, what department, what commission, what, what group they're from. So I'm concerned that, that we respond appropriately to complaints received. Another concern that I have is making sure that all employees, managing director, board members, employees, regardless of the departments of the road commission, that they're all remaining in compliance with the law, that the law is being followed, uh, when it comes to, um, claims of retaliation or discrimination, where it comes to disability, that the law is being followed. And then the other thing is, um, I want to make sure that the road commissioners who we appoint are being responsible in their responsibilities as it relates to, uh, county resources, as it relates to the employees, uh, that, um, that they have there, and as it relates to any policy or laws. Ultimately, a, a concern that I have at this point with this coming up so much is us finding ourselves in a lawsuit scenario because, um, you know, if we do not do what we're suggesting doing. Now, it, uh, being on the record as being responsible during an investigation and then having a third party bring back to us their findings so that then we can decide what our responsibility is. I know that we're limited as a board in this sense that we just appoint, that we appoint the board there. And, um, I know the question was asked previously, I know we had the discussion, uh, Mr. Chairperson about, you know, what can the board do? And we know that that includes us, uh, basically doing an investigation and, you know, potentially removing board members or appointing board members. But how do we even get to that point if we don't know what's happening? So, um, with that said, I'm going to make the motion, if it hasn't been made, that we, um, that we make a motion from this committee that the board will vote on, if it's necessary, for us to hire a third-party investigative vendor, uh, to conduct the, uh, an in-depth analysis and investigation that was happening. Um, so that's a motion.
Support.
So we have a motion and support to hire a third-party investigative firm. Um, if you guys know mine, I'm going to take my time first, I didn't get to speak in discussion. So I have, I have a couple of things with this. So in my research on the issue and speaking with corporate counsel, our authority towards a road commission is limited. We appoint, we fill vacancies, and we can hold hearings for removal. The, the exact process of that hearing for removal is not really spelled out in statute, okay? We also have the ability to decide how they're structured. Whether there's an elected road commissioner, there's a board of commissioner, road commissioners appointed by us, or it's absorbed, which of course has been discussed. And so my concern is for us to... The hearing for removal, what does that look like? Is anybody on this commission qualified to weigh evidence and make a decision to remove somebody without a legal finding in place? We talk about worrying about our own liability for litigation. We put a road commissioner out without a legal finding, whether it's criminal or civil, where do we stand there? As far as hiring a third-party investigator, my suggestion strongly would be to get a solid legal opinion, whether we even have the authority to do that, before putting out county resources and to some extent maybe overstepping our bounds. We, we all know about the issue of the road commission. There's two sides to it. The road commission claims to have done third-party investigations, don't know what that looks like. My concern is where do we stand with legal authority to institute an investigation with a third party and produce a report with findings? I don't know, from what I've seen, we have the authority to do that. I would be more comfortable if we got a legal opinion from corporate counsel that says yes or no. Because if we hold a hearing to remove a road commissioner, I would hope that we've got some pretty solid legal ground to stand on. We know there's been lawsuits, right? Um, what are the outcomes of those and how, how, how did we get here? So that would be, that would be my suggestion from the chairs to get a legal opinion, whether we even have the ability to hire a third-party firm and move forward with that. Mr. Kuznam?
You, uh, mentioned, uh, removing a road commissioner, uh, back in 2020 or 2019. We, uh, started that process to remove, I can't remember, it was two or one. But, uh, that went on for about a year. And the, uh, two that we were talking about removing, uh, they appealed that, they asked, uh, I can't remember what the process was, but they have rights, uh, to question it. And, and, uh, from 19 to 20, we, uh, changed, uh, chairs. And in 20, I was the chair. And, uh, uh, that kind of just died on the vine because that's when COVID kicked in and everybody was concerned about that. And, and I and others on the, the board at that point in time, the road commission issue just was kind of a non-issue. We had more important things to spend our time on. So I only give that as a background as to, you know, maybe a little bit of your answer of whether to remove a road commissioner or not. It's not as easy as what, uh, uh, some people may think.
Yeah, it's got to be non-biased, non-partisan, fair, due process.
Correct.
Hearing, right? Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Lloyd?
Mr. Chair, and, um, and, you know, the good thing is, you know, nobody on this board has, um, um, you know, has suggested that we remove anybody, uh, at this time. You know, I think that by doing an investigation is a step in the right direction in terms of this board, um, not just properly responding to complaints received, but also a good step in the right direction of us committing to, um, ensuring that, you know, investigation is done in a non-bias, non-political manner. The last thing I'll say is that, um, you know, uh, yes, we had a responsibility of doing, you know, I believe, Josh, maybe you can answer this, I know at the city we had, you know, responsibility of, um, to be able to have investigative hearings or what have you. Do we have that same, maybe through you, the general counsel, do we have that same? Ability here? Power, the same power, authority, should I say?
Well, I, I, I think this situation is complicated by the fact that the board of commissioners and the road commissioners are separate corporate bodies. So to the question of can this board have a hearing? And, for instance, for removal of a road commissioner, as the chair of the committee alluded to, they need to have notice of the charges against them or the allegations and an opportunity to be heard. And this board certainly has the ability to engage in fact-finding and, and make those determinations. So a, as a general rule, but, but those things have to be within the board's purview. So I, I, I want to take it one step at a time and answer that question. And I don't know if you have a further question about whether it relates to the road commission?
No, you answered it for me and you mentioned the key word, fact-finding. What I was getting to with the investigations is, as a part of any investigation, even if we were having a hearing to remove somebody, nobody suggested doing that. But there's some fact-finding that goes along with that in order for the board to be able to even make a decision that we have, that we, um, it's our pleasure to remove a person. Certainly, uh, two separate, uh, bodies, if you will. However, we are the appointing authority of that body, which gives us, um, some responsibility, if you will, uh, for what happens, uh, within that body, that organization. Now certainly we... organization. Now, certainly, we don't have the authority to manage the, the managing director, for instance. We don't have the authority to call over and say, you need to do this, 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 and this, because the governing board, the Genesee County Road Commission, they have the oversight responsibility for that, for those employees. We have responsibility for the board, right? And if, etc., we have lawsuits, you know, and so on and so forth, and complaints and so on and so forth, has already been discussed, then we have a responsibility to look into that. And again, during the investigation, I believe is a part of that fact-finding. So I do look forward to whatever that opinion is, but I also look forward to voting on this motion, you know, even pending what you guys come back with. Thanks.
Well, and that's why I mentioned that, hearing for removal, you know, that, maybe it's just semantics, but I would certainly like to know if an investigation into any allegations is valid by us, if it's not for a hearing for removal, which is the wording in the statute.
Just a point of clarification, when I spoke earlier about removing some people in the past, that is not part of the discussion here, as I understand it. No one has brought that up. I only responded from the basic of knowledge that I've had in the past, because you did mention the topic, and I don't think that's the topic of this present resolution.
Yeah, and I mentioned that just because I want to make sure we're not spinning on our wheels or spending taxpayers' money for something that we don't legally have the authority to do.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'm not on the committee either, but I thought I would just say a couple of things. So the way I've approached this, and we came in right out of the gate, or I did, as a new commissioner in early 2023, with vacancies on the road commission, but also people who express concerns about ongoing discrimination and a retaliatory environment. The way I've viewed that is through the lens of what the corporation council described, two separate corporate bodies, where our role is to appoint who we believe to be good road commissioners and hope that they do the right thing, knowing that there sounds like there is a mechanism for removal, although it may be vague in statute. So I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to get some sort of an opinion from our corporation council before I cast a vote next week on exactly what our ability is to, quote, investigate or fact-find with a third party or a second party that we have limited control over, and what our ability is to do that, the ability to draw conclusions, and then the ability to make any changes at the road commission. So I would, I echo what I think you were saying, and that is some formative opinion as to what our lawful ability is to do what is being suggested. Definitely don't want people to be discriminated against for any reason. I've seen that happen, and I know it's happened deeply in this community in different ways. But for me, it's sort of a finer point of what our ability is to control the situation. So I'd look to the corporation council for some guidance.
Further discussion? Dr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm also curious about, as our corporate counsel looks into the scope of our authority, I'm curious about how that intersects with our policy, our appointments policy that we recently updated. Because I believe that policy, and I tried to look for it here, but I couldn't find it, but I know, I believe that policy, I don't know. I believe, my recollection is that this board can remove commissioners for, if they miss X number of meetings, we can remove them and reappoint somebody else. So I'm wondering if, how congruent our policy is with what exactly the law is too. So as you research that, maybe you could look at the two side by side.
Further? Mr. Lloyd?
Just a follow-up to Dr. Brown, in addition to that, you know, and in the case of road commission, because it keeps coming up, and I've said to different folks, you know, they need to handle their own business. They have a board over there, you know, understanding, I believe with any commission, we should have the ability to remove board members for dereliction of duty when they're failing to fulfill their responsibilities, right? Leading us into liability and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, wherever that is. Folks not showing up to meetings, not, you know, fulfilling the mission, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I'm sure there's got to be, there has to be authority on our part, not just to appoint people, but to remove them. And this is not specific to the road commission. Now, this is just in general, in terms of appointments that we make.
Yeah, and I think that if we have the power to remove, then in order to remove, we have to do fact-finding, so that sort of legitimizes our ability, you know, to do fact-finding.
Further discussion? So I don't oppose an investigation, right? Obviously, this comes up every couple of years. Whatever the issue is over there, it needs to be resolved, and it needs to stop, whatever that takes, right? My point is, I can't support a resolution tonight that I don't know if we have the legal authority to pursue this investigation on a separate legal entity, right? Yes, hearing for removal, we got to have something to stand on, so we'll have to do some type of investigative work possibly, or it's legal finding that they violate the law. So with that being said, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor to hire a third-party investigative firm, by Commissioner Lloyd, supported by Commissioner Avery.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to the motion, that we conduct the investigation pursuant to feedback from corporate counsel about our authority? So that way, if it's, if it's, I mean, in the scope of our authority to do so, then we just move forward with that fact-finding through the investigator.
So the amended motion would be that we hire a third party?
To do an investigation?
To do an investigation of practice of the road commission pursuant to our legal authority?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd?
I was just waiting to see what somebody had in support.
So we've got, we've got an amendment offered by Dr. Brown? Is there any support? Oh, you got to be on the committee.
So I'm not, I'm not prepared to support yet. I just want clarity, just clarity, because I was, so we get the opinion, I think there, we need to have some discussion about it because of the sensitivity of, I'm talking about as a board, that is, the sensitivity of this matter, because I'm sure there's going to be additional questions. I'm hesitant to vote to do the investigation pending what you come back with. I'd prefer to maybe, maybe either table or postpone this item to the next committee meeting.
The 19th?
Get the opinion from you, and then that gives us an opportunity to come back to the table and have a discussion about the opinion if we need to, so that there's clear minds and clear hearts, et cetera, and then decide if we proceed at that time. So there was a support for the substitute, but I think we're angling in the same direction. I'll make a substitute motion at this time. Well, I made the original motion, so I withdraw my original motion, and I'll make a motion to postpone this discussion and a resolution, if you will, to do the investigation to our next Public Works Committee meeting.
January, sorry.
19th, I think it is.
March 19th, pending that we have the legal opinion?
No, no, not pending at all. I just added to the, to the, to the agenda, and then with the question to corporation counsel, will you be able to get us an opinion in the next two weeks?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to postpone the discussion and any resolution until the March 19th Public Works Committee meeting by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there support? Support. Supported by Commissioner Avery. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Having no other business on the agenda, we are adjourned at 6:51 p.m.